Regularly scheduled meeting for May the 11th, 2021, Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. Please stand. We're in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Appreciate everyone coming out. Anyway, I'll find it later. I want to thank everyone that came out this past weekend. The Bristol Chamber of Commerce had their trasher size and had volunteers going throughout the community to pick up trash. And it is amazing, both the amount and the types of trash you find on the side of the road. So I want to thank everyone that came out and helped pick up trash, but also encourage people to help keep, you know, we don't have to do that on one special day of the year. If you see trash, pick it up. Please don't litter. We want to make sure that our community looks nice for our visitors, but also our residents. So I'd encourage people to do their best to try to keep our community looking good. So, does anybody else have any comments?
Hello. I know since the last time we met, the news broke, and I'm sure the city manager will talk about it, about Amazon announcing that they're coming to Bristol. But, you know, since we talked before he does, I just wanted to say thank you to the city manager for his work. Thank you to J.A. Street for all the work they put in, and a whole lot of other players in our community and in our region who made that possible. When Amazon first came or first announced that they were coming to Northern Virginia, you know, it was a win for the state of Virginia, but it felt like that was, you know, worlds away from us. So it is a big, it was a big day for Bristol to hear that we would house an Amazon distribution center or an Amazon delivery center. So thank you again to J.A. Street and city manager and the other people in our region who helped make that happen.
Anyone else? All right. I found what I was looking for. City manager had sent me this, but want to let people know that due to the change in the state code, that anyone that's 100% disabled veteran, there's a tax exemption for their personal property. So I'd encourage them to contact the Commissioner of Revenue if you feel you may qualify. And there are other tax exemptions. I know in the past, we changed our ordinance to allow individuals over 65 that meet certain income requirements for exemptions as well. So I'd encourage people to contact the Commissioner of Revenue's office about that. All right. City manager?
Yes, just want to update everyone. The city does have a website now that is live for landfill updates. You can sign up for it. It's on our homepage. And scroll down about halfway through the page, you'll see a landfill update icon that you can click on. Once you click on that icon, it'll take you to a separate page where you can actually look at, click on another link that will take you to the actual information in regards to the landfill. Or you can also sign up for email alerts or text alerts whenever we update that website with something that's going on at the landfill. We're still meeting with the EQ on a weekly basis, and I do post those agendas on that website. So every agenda that we've had is posted on that website along with some other information as well.
Next item, item number C, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. Had one individual sign up. Mr. Pollard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 140 Ashley Drive. I would like to encourage people to stay safe and to take all reasonable precautions because COVID is still a very real risk, even if you have been vaccinated or believe that you have. I have a coworker who received his second COVID shot about two weeks ago. He got COVID over the weekend and died this morning. He was in his early 40s, no known health risks. So COVID does still need to be taken seriously. If you're around other people, wear your mask. People who aren't related to you or in your own family, wear a mask. Be clean. If your nose is hanging out of your mask, you're not wearing a mask. Just be safe because it's still a risk. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Pollard, and please extend our condolences to your coworker and his family. All right. No one else had signed up, but if there's anybody that would like to speak, I'll go ahead and give you the option. All right. If not, we'll move to item D, adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mon Power?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
All right. Regular agenda. Item number one, public hearing for supplemental appropriation of $9,253,484. This time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll have a staff comment. Ms. President?
Thank you, Mayor Hartley, members of council. This item is the public hearing for the supplemental appropriation of $9,253,484. The public hearing was advertised in the May 2nd, 2021 edition of the Bristol Herald Courier. In the supplemental appropriation, the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools requests an additional appropriation of $9,253,484 for federal funding allocated to the schools. This would be an increase for the revenue of the school operating fund and an increase for the expenditures for the school operating fund. There are no local monies in this supplemental appropriation. This is entire federal funding.
No one had signed up to speak at the public hearing, but if anyone wishes to do so. All right. Hearing no public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll move to item number two, supplemental appropriation of $9,253,484 to the school operating fund.
Mayor Hartley, members of council, this is the supplemental appropriation that I just explained, and staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Dr. Perigin is here to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. Again, no one signed up for public comment or the public hearing, but if anyone has something. All right. Hearing nothing, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve the supplemental appropriation.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Well, our school needs money. There's no doubt about that. But I got so much to say about all this government money just rolling down the pipeline. This country is treading on some dangerous grounds financially with the debt. You know, I don't claim to be a mathematician or anything like that, or rocket scientist or whatever, but calculators don't lie. Ladies and gentlemen, this country is playing in some very dangerous territory. Just for grins and giggles, a few weeks ago, you got Siri, you got all these different apps and things on the phones these days? Just for grins and giggles, I asked Siri, if I had all the money in the world that the governments have printed today, how much money would I have? $36.8 trillion is all the money in the world. Now, there's all kinds of assets, there's all kinds of certificates, but printed monies. And this government is trodden on the ground of $30 trillion right now and just sending money out that they don't have. It's borrowed. This is very, very dangerous, and I'm not going to support this. Mr. Perigin, I love your schools. Y'all are doing a great job, and I'd love to see y'all be able to take this money because I know you're going to get it, but I'm not going to support it. The madness has to stop somewhere. I don't have to support the insanity that's going on. If you could build a school with this, this would be the greatest thing that has happened to this city in a long time. But the odds of you being able to do that, you're not going to be able to. It's going to have so many strings attached to it, you're going to have to squander it, and you still ain't going to figure out how to get rid of all of it. That's the way our government works. This is madness. And that's all I'm going to say because I'm going to get all fired up here if I keep talking.
I would agree with Mr. Wingard that, you know, at the national level, we do need to, you know, worry about, you know, what our national debt is. But, you know, if we don't accept this money, it's not like it's going to go as a refund. It's going to get spent at schools in Fairfax or spent at schools in Richmond or Newport News or something. So, you know, if the money is going to be spent, I would much rather it be spent here locally to help our schools. And I know that there are a lot of needs. I know a lot of this money, according to the information we receive from the school system, about of the 9.2, I think 7.4 goes to capital needs, capital facility needs in some way, shape, or form. So I think that there can be a lot of good done with it. So obviously, I'm going to support it because I would much rather we invest this money that has no local attachment, other than what we paid to the federal government, has no local attachment. I'd rather we spend it here than somewhere else.
Well, I kind of say what Mr. Wingard said. I'm kind of speechless over the last several months watching what's going on in the open market, and I don't know how much longer the open market can stand it. Automotive's about to shut down, supply chain's completely busted. We're giving people money to stay home. Manufacturers need jobs, and they can't even find people to work because we're giving them money to stay home. The madness is unbelievable. And if you don't believe it, talk to every business person out there. It's affecting Strongwell. It's affecting Universal Fibers. It's affecting every single company. Can't hire people because the federal government keeps bailing out money for people to stay home. And this is just another giveaway. You know, we'd like to, we'd love to have the school system have the money, but I'd rather take it out of our funds, honestly, than the federal government giving away. I'd rather hand them a check out of our money and tighten our belt than just give it away like the federal government's doing. So at some point, you've got to stand on principle. You know, it just doesn't make sense, and it will come crashing down. It's already started. Inflationary uptick is about to explode, and if you don't think it is, you just wait till the fireworks start happening. We're on the edge of the biggest inflation we've ever seen. And that's why you can't print money. You have to add value to the economy, means you have to make stuff, and we're not doing that. We're just giving money away. We're printing money, and it's not sustainable. And I don't know how we get the message across to politicians, but they better wake up because what they're doing is wrong, and it's going to bring this country to its knees in the next five years if it doesn't, if it doesn't turn around.
No further comment before we vote on this. Pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3115, the transaction involved here, school fund appropriation, disclose the conflict, that the nature of my personal interest affected by the transaction, that my spouse is a member of a business, profession, occupation, or group of members which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. So with that being said, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mon Power?
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number three, presentation of fiscal year 21, third quarter financial update.
Mayor and members of council, this is the finance update for the third quarter of fiscal year 21, data as of March 31st, 2021. This data is prepared on a cash basis. Revenues the city received and expenditures the city paid. This is unaudited data. The general fund summary with a budget of $54.7 million, revenues of $41 million, expenditures of $37.3 million, for a fund surplus of $3.7 million, and of this surplus, $2.5 million is prior year carryover monies. Solid waste disposal fund with a budget of $5.8 million, revenues of $4.5 million, 78% of budget, expenditures of $3.6 million, 64% of budget for a balance of $815,349 at March 31st. Capital projects fund with a budget of $10 million, revenues of approximately $1.2 million, 12% of budget, and expenditures of $1.2 million, 12% of budget for a fund deficit of $28,190, and that deficit is made up of a state revenue receivable. The transit fund with a budget of $477,000, revenues of $266,000, expenditures of $272,000 for a slight fund deficit of $5,000. Once again, that is made up of federal and state receivables for the fund. Here's the general fund revenue summary. Of the $41 million received by the general fund, $26.5 million is from local sources, $11.8 million is from state sources, $2.4 million is from the federal government and other financing sources, $271,692, and that is primarily relating to the fall debt refinancing. This is what our general fund revenue looks like through March 31st, what monies the general fund has received. The blue, our local revenue, is 65%. Local revenue makes up 66% of the general fund budget. State is red at 29%, and it is 27% of our general fund budget. The federal revenue is in green, it is 6%. It is 6% of the budget. And other financing sources, very thin up there, you can barely see it, the purple is less than 1% of our budget. So the revenue composition is right in line with our budget through the third quarter of fiscal year 21. The general fund revenue report, if all revenue were received evenly throughout the year, the even benchmark at March 31st would be 75%. General property taxes is at 64%, a good budget percentage through approaching with, I'm sorry, with the June 5th tax deadline approaching. Other local taxes is at 85%. Permits and privilege fees is at 38%. This budget variance is due primarily to the building permits, inspection fees with a budget of $125,000. It's below budget for the year at 40%. Funds and forfeitures is at 46%. That has, funds and forfeitures with a budget of $200,000. That shortfall is due to the court fines, and we've talked about that throughout the year. That number is below budget for the first three quarters of this fiscal year. Revenue from money and property is at 74%. Charges for services is at 67%. Miscellaneous revenue is at 83% due to a large receipt in the first quarter of this fiscal year, and it has trended up for most of the year. Recovered costs are at 66% due primarily to lower fuel recovered costs. State revenue is at 79%. Federal revenue is at 67% due to the timing of some federal grant expenditures and other financing sources, which is related to that fall bond refinance, is at 101. Financial data graphs, fiscal year 17 is shown in orange, 18 in gray, fiscal year 19 in yellow, fiscal year 20 in red, and fiscal year 21 is shown in the green. Local sales and use tax up from all periods. COVID-19 apparently has not had the impact here that we originally projected, but we will continue to watch this revenue category. Consumer utility taxes are holding steady. Cigarette taxes are down from fiscal year 19 and 20, but they're up from 17 and 18. Lodging taxes, as you can see here, are down from all years presented. Meal taxes are up from 2018, but down from the other years presented, and clearly, the COVID-19 revenue impacts are seen here on the meals and lodging tax. Think it's of note here, if you can look at the red here, where we were in lodging and meals tax for the city a year ago, pre-COVID-19, you can see we were really trending up in the lodging and restaurant meal taxes a year ago, pre-COVID-19. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of $3.3 million looks like as it is received by the city. The blue is a three-year average, and the orange is current year data. Sales tax runs two months behind, meaning that revenues received in March were for the month of January. This is the city's meals tax with a budget of $4.29 million as it's received by the city. Meals tax is the largest of the general fund's other local taxes. March collections are for the month of February. This graph also shows the effect COVID-19 has had on this revenue source, but we are beginning to see recovery in March, and we're going to continue to monitor that to see if that recovery holds. This is what our lodging tax with a budget of $1.34 million looks like as it's received by the city. March collections here are for the month of February, and this graph clearly shows the impact that COVID-19 has had on lodging tax with potential recovery here in March. I stress potential recovery there. The target revenue report, the previous graphs show actual-to-actual comparison between fiscal years. This report shows the fiscal year 21 budget-to-actual comparison. Total positive variances for these categories are slightly over $1 million, driven primarily by the positive meals tax variance. Sales and use tax has a positive budget variance of $504,000. Consumer utility tax, a slight positive budget variance. Tax on records and wheels, a $30,000 positive budget variance. Cigarette tax, just a slight negative budget variance there. Lodging taxes, a negative budget variance through the first three quarters of the fiscal year of $164,000. Restaurant meal tax, budget-to-actual, a very strong positive budget variance there of $672,000. A slight electric consumption tax, positive budget variance. Admissions tax with the budget there has been reduced to $16,500 for the year, and of that, a $4,796 negative budget variance. Communications tax, a negative budget variance there. That category continues to trend downward. We did reduce that budget line item in the city manager's recommended fiscal year 22 So the COVID-19 revenue impact, here is information that compares the estimates used to develop the fiscal year 21 budget compared to actual comparisons to the prior year. Mr. Eads and I have said many times that as we developed the fiscal year 21 budget, we anticipated a year in March 21 that COVID-19 impacts would be over, as did most of the resources we were using across the state and federal government. So we budgeted for sales tax, a full year decrease at 10%. Meals tax, a half-year at 50%, a lodging, half-year at 50%. Obviously, those half-year 50% equal to a full year of 25%. So showing the last three months, January, February, March, sales tax down slightly for January, but up for February and March. Meals tax, down for January, down significantly for February, up for March, and lodging, down for January, down significantly for February, and up for March. You can see that the meals and lodging tend to go in the same direction. As I stated earlier, March numbers do show recovery in the meals and lodging tax, but one month is not really a recovery, so we will continue to monitor that as we progress in the fiscal year. General fund expenditure summary for the year through March 31st. Once again, if all expenditures were even throughout the year, the benchmark would be 75% at March 31st. Government administration is at 72%. Judicial administration is at 67%. Public safety is at 66%. Public works, 60%. Health, welfare, and social services, 73%. Education is at 81%. And the schools need a little more money at the beginning of the fiscal year due to the timing of the state revenue that they receive, so that's not alarming for them to be above that 75% benchmark. Parks, recreation, and cultural, 65%. Community development, 52%. Non-departmental, 64%. Our debt's at 60%. There is a large payment that will be made in June. Transfers at 78%. For overall, general fund expenditures at 68%. It's important to note that the department budgets were reduced significantly for COVID-19, and the department citywide are doing a good job operating within reduced budgets. This is what our general fund expenditures look like, how the city's money is spent. The data on the left is actual expenditures, and the data on the right is the budgeted expenditures. So actual general fund expenditures, public safety is at 28% of the total expenditures. Health, welfare, and social services makes up 17%. Education, 14%. Public works is 9%. The debt is 8.9%. Government administration is 6%. Parks, recreation, and cultural, 4.79%. Transfers, right at 4%. Judicial administration is at 3%. Community development, 1.72%, and non-departmental is at 1.39%. And this data shows that through the first three quarters of the fiscal year, the city's budget structure is holding, operating during the global pandemic. Transitioning to solid waste, once again, revenues of $4.5 million, 78% of budget, expenditures of $3.696 million, 64% of budget for a fund surplus of $815,349. Keep in mind, this fund does still have Keep in mind, this fund does still have over $300,000 of debt service left to pay out of its revenues for the year. Once again, nine months into the fiscal year, the benchmark is 75%. Disposal revenue is at 80%. Collection revenue is at 74%. Non-operating revenue is at 95%, and that is the prior debt savings used to offset the bond payments. We moved 100% of that, or 122,484. Disposal expenditures are at 60%. That is expended. When you look at what is spent and encumbered, that percentage rises to 72% right in line with our benchmark. Collection expenditures, spent 48%, but when you look at what's spent and encumbered, that number becomes 60%, so more in line with where you would expect that to be nine months into the fiscal year. Debt expenditures are at 80%, and keep in mind, debt is 36% of the solid waste disposal fund budget. Falls phases two and three update. Budgeted revenues total $743,000. Year-to-date revenues total $590,000, or 79%. Debt allocated to the falls for this fiscal year is $2.3 million, and we will be paid in full in June of 2021. One-half of the revenue sharing has been paid as of March 31st, totaling $145,987. So the budget deficit, the budget-to-deficit for the year for the falls phases two and three for fiscal year 21 is 1.9 million, and nine months into the fiscal year, we're at $857,000 deficit. Here's the information on the city's upcoming debt schedule. This information has not changed since the last presentation. I have been asked by members of the finance committee to present this information quarterly so that decision-makers and the public seize this information regularly. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Bristol. This does not, this does, excuse me, this does include the recent debt refinance in fall of 2020. So what you can see in the first two columns is that the citywide bond payments will increase to over $7.4 million through fiscal year 27, and the shortfall related to that increase. Then detailed out is the refinanced savings and how that will be used in the current and upcoming budget cycles. So that gives us a net payment, of which a portion of the $1 million annually budgeted for reserves will have to be used to pay that debt. Then is the revenue sharing payment expires. Those monies can be used toward the debt escalation. The unexpended debt service reserve funds that council committed in June 2019 and 2020, totaling just over $2 million, will be used to offset escalating debt payments. So as I presented last quarter, what this schedule really tells us is that under the current debt service budget plan, the plan funds the debt service into fiscal year 26 and fiscal year 21, the current year, budgeted reserves set aside will get the city into fiscal year 27. This is the city's current debt service plan. Cash balance information. The operating cash balance at March 31st, 2021 is $20.6 million. If we look where we were a year ago, March 31st, 2020, the operating cash balance was $17.6 million. March 31st, 2019, the cash balance was $16 million. And March 31st, 2018, the cash balance, $9.9 million. The investments in the reserve, general fund reserve, $1.4 million. $2 million in the general fund debt reserve. And the solid waste disposal fund debt, a small balance there of $21,840. You can see the tan, the historical tan information here. 1617 is $1.7 million draw, and then if you look at that through, back through fiscal year 13, where the city was borrowing $7.6 million. So this slide, we believe, shows the progression, the success the city has made in shoring up its cash balances. So the operating cash balance, once again, is $20.683 million. Of that, $596,342 is for liner accrual. $346,510 is for closure accrual, leaving really total available cash of $19.7 million. And then the investment balances are shown here again. This graph shows the city's cash balance at month end. The red line is the current year. The gray line is fiscal year 20. The orange line is fiscal year 19, and the blue line is fiscal year 18. You can see the trend here. Keep in mind that this is the balance at month end. It does vary during the month, but you can see the curve here. Also, you can see it was below $5 million at July 2017 in fiscal year 18, so you can And this slide shows the CARES money expenditures. The city received $2.9 million in federal CARES funds. $13,704 of that was expended in fiscal year 20, primarily for PPE items. $2,913,331 was expended in fiscal year 21, and it was expended for the following. Community development, $64,137. Discover Bristol, $56,000. Fire department expenditures of $201,000. Highlands Community Service Board, $21,622. That was for PPE expenditures. Human resources, $16,786. Information technology, $231,117. Maintenance of municipal buildings expended $268,872 of the CARES money. Police department, $172,328. The schools received $894,313 as their CARES funding allocation. The sheriff department expended $457,079. Small business grants, $516,000. And social services expended $13,605. That's how the 2.9 was spent this fiscal year. This concludes the presentation of the third quarter finance information. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Are you asking counsel?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to start with, wow. Can you go back to the slides that were showing where we're at with 20-plus million in the bank? And in 1617, we was tanning at 1.7, right there. Wow, we've come a long way. That year 1617 is the driver that I was just compelled to try to get on counsel to do something for this city, or try to do something for this city, because ignorance was driving us in the ground. And five years later, we have done a $22 million turnaround between that 20 million in the bank right now and that 1.7 million from 1617 that was a negative that we was borrowing. This city has really done a good job turning the finances around, and it takes common sense, not pipe dreams. That's all, that's what it is. Just using a calculator and keeping a level head. But now the question comes to the forefront. We're trending up. We've done broke $20 million in the bank for this year. Next year, what's it going to be, '21, '22? The trend is showing that we're averaging $5 million a year right now, or $4 million a year over a five-year span. It's time that this council starts talking about and thinking about giving our residents a tax break on real estate and give them a break. We swore we wasn't going to raise our real estate taxes during this new assessment. And guess what? We did. At some point in time, this council has got to start thinking about the community and letting them keep more of their hard-earned money, because this city is going to continue to grow. We don't need a tax rate at 1.12 right now. It should be 1.10. We should, but we should have passed that to have broke even. But no, we're going to add $500 more thousand, $600,000, whatever it is. And I'm asking this council to start thinking about the people in the community. We don't need to keep growing money till we got $50 million in the bank. We need to keep spending the money wisely. We need to keep allocating it wisely and not shoot from the hip when things are put before this city. But wow, this city's done a good job, and it's taken a lot of people to do this, but it's holding to the truth that the calculator don't lie. These are good numbers. And for us to come through COVID, which we ain't out of the woods yet, 100%, but we're getting there, this is impressive. Good job.
So I'd say a few more things we could talk about. It's a good job, I mean, speaking of sales, you know, why, to see where we are, it's really, we were picking each other up, we were almost throwing cups at each other, spitting and gnashing teeth, but, you know.
I said, we were, we were almost fighting, we were spitting, and we were gnashing teeth, and we were yelling at each other, and we were throwing cups, and, you know, the last four or five years wasn't easy. You should have been behind closed doors in some of these meetings. It was tough. We didn't get along. But you can see what, you can see what debating stuff tough gets you, right? It gets you where you need to be. But there's still some things we have to talk about, right? I mean, we now have some cash on hand, but we know we've got needs. We've got real needs. We've got to finish up getting the handicapped situation of school fixed. We should pay cash for that, be done with it. We've got to start paying cash for things, not accruing things. We've got to set aside money, accrue obviously for the landfill, but it's got, that's got to go up. You've got to cover the cost of known accruals, right? You should pay the liner in cash. You shouldn't borrow any more money for stuff like that, right? So we've got well above the 12 million that we need for the threshold of the policies. So we've got a little room here if we spend the money smartly, right, on things we know we need to take care of, right, and do it a little bit at a time. Don't overdo it, because the economy is, you know, it's kind of burping now, so you've got to pay attention to that. But, you know, I think things, if, if you're, if you're good at looking at those numbers of where we came from and looking at the debts in front of us, right, and knowing that, okay, we're five years out, we can start paying cash for things and not putting anything to any kind of debt load, start taking care of some of the expenses, and it means little stuff too, because, you know, you might think, well, a lawnmower or a trash truck or things like that, you know, financing versus paying cash, but you start adding that stuff up, you know, you do four or five big capital purchases before you know it, you've spent another 50 to 75, $100,000 in finance charges that you could have avoided, you know, so it may not be one item, but it adds up after you buy several items. So, you know, look at that kind of stuff and recommend, you know, a hard line. You know, let's pay cash, we've got it. Let's don't, let's don't add any financing charges to the city tax burden. When you look at that, Mr. Wingard's right, you know, this, this city has what, this city tax base got us out of this, right? And they got us out of this, and they didn't come in here screaming and crawling and crying and yelling. Some did, but they could have lined these, they could have lined these walls up for the money we took from them over the last five years, right? But now we're there, and we should pull the real estate tax rate back to where it belongs. Don't take another $300,000 or $400,000 from the taxpayers. They've already given you 20 million, okay? Don't take any more money from them. They got us out of the, out of the woods. Let's give them a break and get them back to where they need to. And businesses, businesses want to see a horizon. They want to see a five-year stable horizon. You know, you've got people now really thinking about investing in the city and opening up a business, right? Because they see the activity that's starting to occur around Bristol. Well, what do they want to see? They want to see you bringing the tax rate and the tax burden of doing business in the city for not only employees, the customers that'll come and, you know, spend money. They want to see it stable. They want to see it's going down and it's going in the right direction so that they know it's a safe bet for them to risk their investment dollars to put in big businesses, right? So they run the numbers. So don't, don't think that a big restaurant chain that's thinking about coming here to support the casino is not looking at the meals tax on this side of town and the meals tax on the other side of town. They run those numbers side by side, right? And they go, where is it going to be more profitable for me and easier for me to bring customers in? Is it going to be Bristol, Virginia, or is it going to be Bristol, Tennessee, right? And they run those numbers. So we should be running those numbers, because in some cases, they don't look very good. And now's our opportunity to pull back on some of the burden we're throwing out there to pull tax dollars in, right, from people spending the money and put ourselves in a better position to add more businesses so you actually grow that tax base and not pull it back. So you can tax yourself out of business, so to speak. So it's a good job, but I think we've got some thinking to do. I think we've got some hard discussions still left ahead to make sure we do it right going forward, because this thing could turn, turn south and stay, and stay in the negative territory quickly if we're not careful.
So Ms. Bradlin, I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work on this presentation, also for you and your entire office's hard work to get us where we are. And, you know, obviously, we as a council are involved, but you do a lot of the background work, and that's, that's a lot of the hard stuff, so we appreciate that. I did have a question, and I did have a thing or two I was going to say. Back on the slide, talking about where we are as far as expenditures and whether we're on track or not, and it has all the percentages. Generally, when you're going through these, I know you'll highlight if one's way out of line, that one, yeah. You'll highlight if one is way out of line. Maybe I just missed it. What's going on with community development being lower than it would be on track to be?
Community development, right now, we have unexpended salaries and benefits in that department.
Okay.
Related to fiscal year 21, yes. So it's just trending downwards slightly.
So as far as the other functions of the department, everything is?
Yes.
Going like it should?
Yes.
Other than that, I mean, I, I think, you know, as has been said, I think this is a very positive presentation. I know that, you know, in terms of raw numbers, we are down in, in lodging tax and really in meals tax, but, you know, we're, we're tracking pretty well, all things considered, with COVID and what's been going on. And, you know, I think that is a testament, that's a testament to good financial management here and responsible budgeting. It's also really a testament, you know, to, not only to our chain restaurants, but our local businesses who've been able to hold on and weather through this, you know, and be able to pay their lodging tax, you know, restaurants here being able to pay all their meals tax that's due. I think that is, I think that's a testament to them as well. I just want to say, I mean, it's positive. You know, we have a long way to go still, but we're, we're certainly a thousand times better position than we were even, not just five years ago, but when I came on to council. So, so thank you for your, you and your office's hard work, and I think we'll continue to grow in a good, good pace. You know, as residents have said, you know, you can't count your chickens before they're hatched, and there's no money from the casino here yet, but I do think that we'll see, we'll see ourselves in a much better position in a year, a year or two from now. So, so I think we're, I think we're doing all right, so thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would, I just would like to say that the progress the city's made is a citywide effort. It starts with the direction of council, certainly, but as the direction of the city manager and departments all across the city who have continued, especially during COVID-19, continued to do more with less. So I feel like, you know, I need to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say thank you to the, to you and the whole finance department, and I've, I agree with a lot of what I've heard up here. I think a lot of times we are on the same page, I think, with the direction we're moving towards in the city. We may not agree all the time, but I think it's great that we do have, you know, money that we still need to pay for and things like focusing on paying cash for things like liner accrual and not taking out new debt, I think is important. And I completely agree. I think we need to keep at the top of our priority, the, the real estate tax rate. You know, we lowered it some this year. I feel like in the past, we've, we've had big jumps and big decreases and big jumps again. And if we can kind of get on a gradual decline over the next several years, I'd love to be able to continue that trend. I, I hear it every day in, in my line of work in, in real estate. People say, I want to buy a house near Bristol, but I want to live in the county and, or maybe I'll live on the Tennessee side. So I think if the trend is the real estate taxes continue to be lowered year after year after year in the future, you know, that mindset could eventually change where people are saying, hey, I want to move into Bristol, Virginia. I mean, some are saying that now, but people are cognizant of the real estate taxes. So I think if we keep that at the forefront of our mind, that's important. So, but it's a great job to you and your department and to every department head too who's cut back and really tightened their belt, not just now with COVID, but over several years. So, thank you, guys.
I would like to correct you on that, one comment, Mr. Farnum. I'm getting old, I'm losing it. We did not reduce the real estate revenues.
Right.
We reduced the real estate rate, tax rate. We increased real estate revenue. So we added more tax burden to the community because the revenue increased. It's just we lowered the rate.
Yeah, I'm paying more taxes, but our rate went lower, but we didn't have anything to do with the assessment.
No, 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 we didn't. But we do have everything to do with setting the rate. So we did have an increase in real estate taxes.
Mr. Osborne, I'm gonna add one thing to my comment earlier about community development. That also, that large variance is some incentive payments not yet paid out because certain criteria have not been made. There are some open positions in that category, but there's also large Commonwealth Opportunity Fund payments that haven't been paid out and some incentives as well, okay?
Is that, is that normal for the timing on that or do they, are they usually paid out by now? Because I don't, I don't think I remember.
The largest, the largest piece of that is a one-time payment. We received some monies and the, the business has not met the threshold yet, so we can't disperse it. That's the largest piece of, of that piece of the variance, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just, like everyone else, Ms. Bradl, and thank you for the, the report and the work your department does. And really, as you pointed out, the city manager and all the department heads, you know, keeping our expenses in line this year. It's been a tough year and, and a year ago, you would have said you'd give a report that looked like this. I'd been very surprised. So we've been very fortunate, but we're still not quite out of the woods yet. And one thing I would like to thank you, because I think this is the first time both the council and the public's, and it is to including the slide with the dispersment of, the total dispersment of the CARES Act funding. I think that's important for people to see how that was used and, and where it went to. Because I know as it came in, we kind of did that in drips and drabs, so to see it all totaled up in one place, I think is very important. All right, does anybody else have anything? All right, if not, we will move to item E, ordinances, first reading. Item one, first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 3 of the City Code by caption only, ordinance 21-1. The staff report, I think, is it you, Mr. Dietrich?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just want to give a little background on it and just hit some of the highlights that we did hit at the public hearing. So the item, or the thought to revise the subdivision ordinance was first presented to the Planning Commission in March 15th, regular meeting. They recommended it to a joint public hearing with Planning Commission, City Council, which was held at the April 13th meeting. No comments from the public were made at that hearing. At the April 19th meeting, the Planning Commission, they voted 5-0 to recommend the proposed revisions to the City Council for first reading. So I'll just hit on a few of the high points, a few of the major changes that are listed in the revision. The majority of the changes involve removing redundant conflicting statements. The definition section has been updated and has been moved to the end of the document, updating language to comply with current Commonwealth of Virginia code on subdivisions. And little things like updating who can prepare a plat, surveying standards, how many copies of the plat were required to be submitted. These are the types of things that we've kind of streamlined. I would say that some of the more major changes to the ordinance, there are probably three of them that I can list as they relate to the subdivision process. So the first one is the designation of a subdivision agent to review and approve certain plats. This would be a staff member designated by City Council tasked with reviewing, signing, and in some cases, approving subdivision plats. This would most likely, or it would make more sense, have the Director of Community Development or a city planner would be this designation. The second major change would be the ability for the subdivision agent to approve preliminary plats. Currently, these plats, which are basically just plats in draft form prior to comments being made, have to be approved by the Planning Commission. So when they go to a Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission has to approve the preliminary plat and then they have to turn around and recommend the final plat. So this would take out one step. We feel it would allow staff to approve these. It'd be a more streamlined process. Third, currently, the City Council is designated by code to approve final plats, which increase the number of land parcels. The revision would instill, instead, allow the Planning Commission to give final plat approval and remove the City Council's step. Again, the thinking is that this would streamline and speed up the approval process for developers and for other landowners who would like to subdivide property. Plats that reduce the number of lots or that adjust lot lines would maintain the state, the same approval process as is current, which is a staff-only approval. Thank you.
Guess, any questions for Mr. Dietrich?
I, I have no questions. I've sit on the Planning Commission and thank you, Mr. Dietrich, for explaining that. The way it, it comes across to me is it's, it's, we're trying to streamline the process, the old saying, work harder, not smarter, especially to, did I say that wrong? Work smarter, not harder. We do both here and we do both on the City Council, but...
I thought I was getting old.
It's that, yeah.
But, and especially where he mentioned working with developers, you know, folks coming in, it ultimately should, should make things easier, which hopefully, when people come to the city of Bristol, they leave by saying, well, it was easy to work with those guys. I was able to get answers, get things done quickly, so.
Thank you for, for recommending these changes. I do have, I do have one question. Does this, does this bring us in line with, with other localities and how they handle plat approvals and?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag in Virginia. You know, the, either, the, the Commonwealth doesn't state that the council has to approve. It does give the authority to the Planning Commission if it's in the City Code. Some of the comparisons that were done, the Washington County, Virginia operates this way, Smith County, Virginia operates this way, Abingdon does have their town account, town council approve final plats. And, let's see, Roanoke, no City Council action. And Waynesboro, Virginia, they said, they, they separate a little bit differently. Minor subdivisions, which is a smaller number of lots, are approved in-house, but the major subdivisions are done by the City Council. We, we tried to stay in Virginia, that we have a couple of Tennessee ones, they are planning commission only, but it's better to compare the Virginia localities as opposed to others, those in Tennessee with the differences in state law.
Thank you. I agree with what else, what, what has been said already, that it's good to streamline things, to make it easier for businesses and even for residents to, to get approval for stuff and to, to work with the city. So, so thank you for your work on this.
Well, my comments on this is, I spent several years on the Planning Commission myself, so I, I know the hard work they do and what they try to do. And I want to thank everybody, every person that's on that Planning Commission and our other boards that dedicate their time and services to this city. Thank you very much. We need your support and your input. But this is one of those things that I'm good with part of it, but I'm not good with some of it, okay? I, I, I see where you want to streamline everything and you want to clear up some verbiage and everything, that, that's perfectly fine. But here's the thing about, and it's just not with government, it's, it's with well-oiled businesses too, a checks and balance system. If this is passed tonight in its current form, this council will no longer see anything dealing with the Planning Commission. So I really don't understand at that point who, who, who the Planning Commission would answer to. Would it be the city manager? There, there's a lot of questions I have. And with all this final stuff and final recommendations coming from planning to council is another step of checks and balances to make sure that we have a better chance of getting things right in this city. So for that reason, I can't support this. Because we need checks and balances in place and more eyes being put on things to make sure that the city is moving forward in the right direction. And we can all talk about it. It may be one of those deals where council would recommend it and would like to see it come before them, but the Planning Commission is just not buying into it. And it may be vice versa. So I'm not in favor of this because I believe that critical stuff needs to come before the council. So with that, I can't support this.
It, it would eliminate the subdivision plats, of course, coming to the council. However, other items such as rezonings or special use permits from the Planning Commission would still continue to come to council, just to make that clear, that's all.
Now, I just wanted to say, because I, I completely agree, well, understand what you're saying, because I, I struggled with this for a little bit, you know, thought about it a lot, we met a lot. And the reason why I'm okay with it is because I, I feel like there are still checks and balances in place. You know, that, that was really my first thought was, is this too loose? We, we don't want a bunch of zoning changes all willy-nilly and we'd have no control over it. So it, I do feel like there are still checks and balances in place.
All right, anybody else have a question for Mr. Dietrich? Moving then, no one signed up to comment, but if anyone would like to make a comment, I'm happy to let you do that. All right, this time, do I have a motion for the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 3 of the City Code by caption only?
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we want to have any further discussion? I will just say, I, I appreciate the work, not only on this, but that the members of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have done, going back, looking through our codes. I know you, you looked at the zoning ordinance, that took a very long time. Now you're moving to, to subdivision. So, you know, you're periodically looking at these and making sure things are, are up to date and more current. Some of those changes, as you say, are more, almost of a clerical nature, but, but some, you know, are, are more with the times, such as how documents are submitted, that it's electronic now and not by paper. So I think that's always good, that the, the staff and the Planning Commission always review these kind of things and, and bring revisions back to us for consideration. All right, if there's no further discussion, then clerk, call roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 3 of the City Code of Ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, that exists in Chapter 50, Article 3, be removed and replaced with a new Chapter 50. Article 3 is contained below Chapter 50, Land Use.
Have the, I'll move to the next item, the first reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021, 2022 by caption only, ordinance 21-2. Staff report?
Counsel, tonight is the first reading of the budget ordinance of fiscal year 21 and 22. I presented the budget on April the 6th and we had the first public hearing of the budget on April the 27th, and tonight is for motion and second of the first reading of the ordinance.
At this point, again, I don't think anyone had signed up to comment, but if anyone would like to, in the public. If not, what is the pleasure of council?
I move for first reading of the budget ordinance by caption only.
I have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion?
Well, once again, I'm going to say that, you know, I, I appreciate all the hard work that CFO and the city manager and department heads have done on the budget, but I'm not going to support this budget this year simply because the tax rate is too high. I would like to see a city attorney. We're, we're just closing our eyes to that. And, you know, we're, we're, we're doing good, but I believe that we can do better for the community. And so I, I can't support this budget this year. I mean, we, the city needs a, a full-time attorney. We've got a great city manager. Now we need a great attorney and we need to reduce our tax rate on the real estate. So with that, I'm, I'm not going to support this budget.
Yeah, I've got five reasons here why I'm not going to support it either. First one is, I think we need to establish a school construction fund. I've said it a couple of times. I think we've got the cash now on hand. If we're serious about constructing a school, most municipalities start to save money. The way you start to save money, you put aside a school construction fund and you keep putting money in that until you've got money in there to where you can least afford a down payment and move forward with school construction. It should have been done 60 years ago, 70 years ago. If you do it every year like that, you don't end up waking up and not having money to build a school. So that's one reason, that's not in there. I think we need that. Landfill operations being status quo. I don't like the fact commercial haulers are coming in here from outside this community and putting 90% of the trash in our landfill. That needs to stop and doesn't really matter to me if we've incurred 35 million in debt. We need to stop other people exasperating our problems and that needs to be fixed. Expenditures are a little too high on this budget. They're okay, but they're not low enough. I think the revenues spell that. The revenues are down, but we've got some areas in the budget that are higher than what I would have, I was expecting. No city attorney is the other reason. It's time for a no, it's time for a city attorney. We've said that. It was only a temporary pullback when we did that. Temporary is up. We need a city attorney. And then the last thing is real estate tax. You can't burden the community with 320,000 more dollars of real estate taxes and cause that, and call that a step in the right direction. It's not a step in the right direction, it's a step backwards. This community's... This community's already taken it on the shorts with all the landfill trash increases and everything else. And it's, it's, we increased their tax rate. We tried to not say that, but that's what we did. So we should've pulled it back, not just even, we should've pulled it back even plus another penny or two to show we're really serious about bringing real estate tax down. That's the only way you're serious about it. So for those five reasons, I can't support this either. If those would get adjusted before the second reading, I could support it.
Well, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to vote yes on it. I, I do support the budget as, as we presented it. I've read through the entire thing. It's, uh, by no means is it a perfect budget and obviously we all have things we would like to see changed. Um, but you know, it's, it's, it's a tight budget, you know, and there's, there's not a lot of places where we could really realistically cut, uh, any more money, you know, if we're being realistic about it. Um, you know, and would I like to see a city attorney? Sure. But you know, where do you find the money? You know, it was cut out several years ago, right before I got on council. And it's, it's one of those things that's very hard to add back. You know, it's a large expenditure. Um, so yeah, it, it, by no means is it a perfect budget, but I think it's, I think it's a very good budget. And I think that most of our expenditures are in line with where they should be. So, uh, so I will be voting yes on, uh, on this budget.
Well, I just wanted to say, um, you know, just thinking about where we are as a city, kind of stepping back, taking the look at the big picture, you know, uh, Tom Brady wins a lot of Super Bowls, as he's pretty good, but he doesn't do it all himself. It's about his coaches putting the right pieces together around him. And I think we've got the right pieces in place in our city now. It starts with the city manager, the CFO, the finance department, all the department heads. I think it's evident by the presentation earlier, the financial presentation showing sort of where we've been and where we're going. Um, we're on our way to build a championship team. So I, as excited as I am overall of what Bristol's done, the progress we've made over the past four or five years, I'm very excited about what it'll look like over the next five years. So we still have a lot of work to do, but, um, as far as this budget, you know, it's, it, even this budget looks different than, you know, what we thought it would look like just coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, you know, there's some, uh, there's some good, there's some bad, there's, you know, some changes ever anyone could suggest we make, but, uh, but overall, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah. I tend to agree that, uh, this budget is by no means a perfect budget, but given the circumstances that, uh, we're in right now, I think it's a very good budget. I think it's, uh, um, you know, very cautiously estimates our revenues, which were still down and, and we haven't recovered from, uh, as well as the expenses we need to, to maintain the city services. Uh, you know, there's just some good in it. Um, uh, and there's some things that, that need, probably could be changed. But the problem is when you start making changes and you take from one, you, to, to add to one line, you're going to have to take from another line. And, uh, sometimes the problem you're trying to solve, you end up creating a worse problem in the process. Uh, you know, one of the things that, that I really, um, when I look at it, strikes me is the fact that, uh, the, the small amount of money we're giving, uh, to promote tourism in our community, uh, especially given how, um, people are ready to get out and travel, uh, that, you know, that it's becoming more safe to travel. I think we are, have a great opportunity and, you know, spending money in that category would really help build, boost the two areas where our revenues are down, which is lodging tax and mills tax. Um, you know, again, I don't know where that would come from out of this budget. Uh, I think there may be some other ways, um, in the weeks to come that we, we may be able, uh, to deal with that issue and maybe some others. Uh, but I do appreciate, uh, the work city manager put into this. I know it's not easy to come up with a budget. Um, and especially, there's still a lot of uncertainty. There's a lot of things, as I look through this, I can think of some very large potential expenses looming on the horizon that this budget, um, doesn't account for, you know, may come to pass, may not. But, uh, you know, I think right now, uh, given that we're still in the midst of a pandemic, I think, um, this is a good plan. And just like last year, uh, when we did a budget, we may have to, I would say, you know, we won't pass this in May and be done with it. This is something that we'll continually look at throughout the year, uh, as revenues come back online, uh, or, or not, and, uh, see how, where we're at and continue to make adjustments. All right. Do I need to read this, Mr. Eat? Do I need to read this again?
Uh, yeah, go ahead and read that again.
Okay. Well, there's no further discussion. Uh, again, I'll read this statement regarding conflict. Uh, pursuant to Virginia code 2.2 dash 3115, uh, the transaction involved the, um, city budget and the school fund appropriation. Uh, the nature of, uh, officer's personal interest is that my spouse is a member of a business, profession, occupation, or group, the members of which are affected by this transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and, and in the public interest. All right. Uh, being no further discussion, clerk, call roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance?
Budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021, 2022, making general fund, community development block grant fund, solid waste disposal enterprise fund, local funded capital projects fund, state and federal funded capital projects fund, Commonwealth attorney federal revenue sharing fund, transit enterprise fund, asset forfeiture fund, school operating fund, school textbook fund, school food service fund, and school local capital projects fund. Appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022 in the following amounts. General fund, $54,885,889. Community development block grant fund, $350,000. Solid waste disposal enterprise fund, $6,404,420. Local funded capital projects fund, $172,000. State federal capital projects fund, $6,555,825. Commonwealth attorney federal revenue sharing fund, $84,600. Transit enterprise fund, $540,709. Asset forfeiture fund, $357,925. School operating fund, $37,507,77. School textbook fund, $789,808. School food service fund, $2,377,396. School local capital projects fund, $532,039. And regulating payments out of the city physi- city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Eat. Uh, now to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Uh, I moved to approve, moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion by councilman Osborne, a second by vice mayor Farnum. Clerk, call roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
No further business. We stand adjourned.